June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, and I'd like to call the meeting of the city council to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Pastor John Dees from Crosspoint Church for the invitation.
As I do every time when I come for the prayer at Madison City Council, I just want us all to take a moment, just to be still, be quiet before the Lord. And let us take a moment just to say thanks to Him for all of His blessings that He's given. And if there's anything between us and Him right now, anything we need to confess to Him, just take a moment. And Lord, I'm so grateful to be here tonight and so grateful to be with these folks. Thank you for this city council. Thank you for all of these leaders that serve us and serve us so well. And I pray that you would give them great wisdom in a thankless task. Lord, thank you for raising them up to seek to govern this community in the best possible way. We're just human beings, they're just human beings. But Lord, we do seek you, we do seek your wisdom. And we do hope that the decisions that are made reflect a good purpose, something you can be pleased with. We are so thankful to have this good night, we're thankful. Lord, I just want to say thanks for air conditioning. And thank you for all the blessings that we do have. And for this time, Lord, we're grateful to you. And we pray all these things in the matchless name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the flag of religion. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, and every city and district for all.
Roll call please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford.
Thank you. And do we have any minutes to the agenda?
I've got one change on number nine E in the consent agenda. This number, there's an extra number in here, the number needs to be two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and nineteen cents.
Okay. And with that, the agenda is approved. Next, I need approval for minutes, two thousand and twenty-three dash eleven dash R G.
Move to approve.
Motion second and any discussion? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
And the motion passes. We do not have any presentations or awards this evening. We will now move to public comments that pertain to the agenda. Everyone has three minutes to speak. Please state your name and the district you reside in when you approach the podium. Reference the agenda item that you are speaking to. If you have any general comments, please reserve those till later in the agenda when we will receive general public comments. We have two comment cards that have been turned in for agenda-related comments. And first, I'd like to call up B B Ogen.
Since I'm here, you're not surprised, are you? On the agenda items, I want to know what happened to the fire station. Was it maintenance or what that they're doing on my, they happened to do something to the bay window. It just says money, five thousand dollars they're spending on it. When it gets to that, I'd like to know what happened. And on the knowledge thing, I went by to see the attorney today and they weren't there, everybody was gone. And I want to know what knowledge is doing. It seems like to me we did something on knowledge some time ago, not too long ago. And I want to know if this is taking the place of what was done also in that. Find it. It's under legal. It mentions about a ten-year extension, but yet the paper that you look on the extended agenda says five years. I didn't get any answers. I would just like to know if this is changing what you did. I think you did it earlier this year. I want to go back and look at all of my minutes to find out. And also, does this give them the authority to dig again in my front yard? Like all these other ones are done. Water cannot get to the street because of all the digging that's been done in my front yard. I'd just like to know what this knowledge thing means when we get to it.
Thank you. The next comment card that we have turned in is Ms. Bernadette Meyer.
Good evening. I forgot my glasses in the car, so I'm going to have to wing it and run out and get them. But okay, so on the general related topics, the Sinovus Bank authorized signatures. Concern about the facsimile signature thing. But it seems that items that are approved through the full council and not just the finance committee or budgeted for submitting, I'm not real clear about that because it seems that there's some under the radar, not public information. Public should be expected. I don't know, I can't be attending the finance council meetings and when things come up to the city council meetings. But three council members are on this finance committee and I'm not really sure about the power thing on there. So that's a concern for me. Okay, on legal with the knowledge, the cable and broadband. Okay, they're discontinuing the home cable. So are they continuing with the municipal cable stuff? And then I'm concerned about the franchise agreement. That if that allows the contract to continue with, if say that that business or franchise sells, would that contract be continuing? I really kind of feel that it might be, it'd be, I'd really like to have language be a disincentive for any use of the contract for changes for another vendor. If, for instance, that vendor, you know, sold their business or whatever. Because that's not in the city control, other than if you contractually put it in that if there's a change in ownership that it needs to, you know, either get rebid or something. But anyhow, and then I'm concerned about how the public comment stuff is continuing to be structured, especially with additional public comments. And then the meeting where, to me, it would seem useful that the different department heads that are at the city council meeting should be able to hear those comments. And for instance, I'm going to have comments tonight that I wasn't at the last meeting because of family issues. And so I couldn't make comments that those people could hear. So that was one concern. Okay, then, next on the police. The school has built in with the property tax money for safety. And it seems like some of the things are going to be reimbursed to the mass and police on the school resource officers and stuff, but it's not really clear. It seems that there's some things that aren't going to be reimbursed. Like for the Board of Education should also be invoicing and paying for any training equipment for crossing guards. It seems like we're going to be paying, they're going to be reimbursing us for the hours and stuff. And I'm not really sure with the school resource officers.
Meyer, you're out of time.
Yeah, well, okay, the rest of it's written on the card there you have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on an agenda-related item? Please come forward, state your name and district.
Margie Daly, Karen's District. So any business corporation, government entity wouldn't allow any document without a clear signature and printed name to be signed into law or even acceptable to pass by a council vote. If not clearly written, who is receiving the contracts? We have Renee and Brian are both attorneys. And they're aware that these are incomplete contracts and we shouldn't be accepting it. I see this every single council meeting in the agenda packet. Okay, why and when spending tax dollars is supposed to be transparent and legally correct? I want this on the record with two attorneys plus two full departments, H R and legal, plus the supposed council president is an attorney with a non-active bar license. Public record for the bar association. We need pride and transparency in all aspects of the law. Resolution one ninety-eight, this has to do with resolution one ninety-eight, two oh four, and ordinance one thirty-four. One ninety-eight, New World Software. Has anybody done their due diligence on this company? They have three pages of lawsuits on Google. They have a page on Facebook saying, "Stop wasting taxpayers' money, stop Tyler Technology." Yet we're going to put in a contract that doesn't even say what it does. All it says is there's a thirty-day maintenance after we accept this product. So there's a lot of problems with this new world software. Tyler Technologies, and it's all over the internet. Okay, two oh four R, now eight people consigned to withdraw tax dollars of less than twenty-five thousand. Why? Why can IT need the authority to forty-nine accounts? It doesn't state after a resolution, ordinance, or bid process. This bypasses legal requirements and has loopholes the size of the sun. Why are our contracts so open-ended? One thirty-four, Knowledgey of Huntsville later refers to WOW, currently both out of the cable business. So we're going to give a five-year contract. Why? Because we want them to have collateral so when they sell this business, because that's obviously what's going on, because right in the contract it says we're going to sell it. Who's benefited? I bet it's Broad, large broadband LLC that's benefiting from this contract. Okay. One eighty-eight, again, must request that department heads must listen till the end of the council meeting because many of the comments are going to refer to department heads. So the only way for us to get an answer and for them to know what the people are saying. Then we have two oh nine, pickleball courts. Okay, we're going to put a million dollars into pickleball courts. Our streets are not safe, we don't have sidewalks. Mary Beth is giving away our sidewalks. What is going on in this city? You know, the job is for health and safety.
Your time is up. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward and reference your agenda item that you'd like to speak to. Seeing none, we will close public comments on agenda-related items and move to the finance committee report.
The finance committee has reviewed all the regular and probably bills to be paid and found everything to be in order. With that, I'd like to move to approve.
Motion second, is there any discussion? And that's as corrected on item E.
Yes, ma'am. We have a one donation by T. Colopy, an amount of twenty dollars. That's going to be deposited into the senior center donation account also.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, ready for vote.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
And the motion passes. Presentation of reports, beginning with Mayor Finley.
All right, four quick things. First, Gerald Smith started today. He is our new facilities director and he can't come anytime too soon with the different things that we have going. I know Dustin and his team have done a fabulous job. But Gerald is going to come in and help us not only take care of our existing facilities, but take care of our new facilities in the best possible way we can. This is Armed Forces Week in this community. It's not just a day, it's a week. We have signed a proclamation this morning. There's a concert in the park in Huntsville. If we get done early enough tonight, you can go watch that. Softball game tomorrow at Toyota Field at five-thirty. And then we'll end at the end of the week with a celebration at lunch. Again, proud of our community for all that we do for our armed forces. Yesterday at the Trash Panda game, they recognized the Gold Star families. And I think they had over thirty or forty people there just that were Gold Star family oriented, which is fabulous. Remind everybody that on July third is our day at Dublin Park for fireworks, but also a big day with recreation and all the different things that they have going throughout the day. And then lastly, I just wanted to, several new businesses opened in the last couple of weeks. One of which was the Trash Panda Emporium, which is across the street in the shopping center over there. So it's now here in Madison and you can spend your tax dollars there. One other thing that I wanted to say though with the Ball Corp's team is they basically had three rateouts this week out of their six games. And they still ended up getting all six games in in many instances. And with over twenty-two thousand fans that came through, pretty much within three games. You know, I know it's six, but even last night, if you could have seen the field, we have pictures at two o'clock and then saw it at game time at five. It's amazing how well that field drained and what they've done. But they're working diligently to keep those games going. And I'm really appreciative of everything that the Ball Corps and the Trash Panda team has done. With that said, that's all I have.
Thank you, District One.
Yes, I wanted to echo Mayor's comments. If you want to see what the different events are for Armed Forces Service Week, you can go to Huntsville Chamber, they have the listing there. But it's just a great way to honor our military, active and retired. If you're not familiar with what a Gold Star family is, that's someone who has lost a military member, son, daughter, husband, wife. And they're just very special in our hearts for the ultimate sacrifice that they and their family have given. Wanted to share with you some slides from today. I was blessed to get a tour. Many thanks to Steve Smith and the mayor's office for letting me go. And we'll go through these. It's just amazing to see that. Did I not say community center? Oh, this is a community center, yes, on Brown's Ferry Road. And just the transformation is just amazing. Would like to remind everyone that this is an active construction site and you cannot go out there if you're a member of the public for many reasons. Number one, as I mentioned, it's active construction. You can see all of the debris, they have pallet jacks, so much equipment out there. It would be a hazard for you to go. So please don't go. If you want to go, wait till the grand opening, which we're looking forward to in two thousand and twenty-four. So it's just great to see. I mean, it's just really opened it up and just my hat's off to Lee Builders. They're happy, the architect firm, Noah Van Pearson, they're happy. And like at my house, if mom is happy, the whole family's happy. If the architect and construction company are happy, we're all happy. So my hat's off to Daryl and thanks again for the tour. I really appreciate that. And then I also wanted to mention that the library movies have started back. And so today, the next one, June twenty-ninth, will be Superman Two. Then follows with a couple of Indiana Jones, The Princess Bride, and Ends in Ghostbusters. And so those are every Thursday night. And you can look to see what movie you'd like to go and see on the library website. And then just one last shout out. My thanks to Honest Roasters and Chillabay for being involved with the concerts. They're having, they have a special celebratory dessert that just, she showed me a picture of today that looks like it has everything in there, chocolate, ice cream. I mean, it just looks fabulous. So next concert is July thirteenth. That'll be Calypso, expecting a great turnout for that. And just want to thank those two companies for really investing in Madison and bringing just some wonderful dessert and coffee to our area. And that's all I have.
Thank you, District Two.
Yes, Paul and I actually attended a Trash Pandas game with the Industrial Development Board just last week. And we had the opportunity to meet with some potential investors in our city. And it was, the game was rained out, or it was not, didn't play. But I was amazed at how many people hung around and had dinner and enjoyed. It was a lovely night, the field just didn't drain if there was an issue or something. And so obviously, they got that fixed by the time you saw it. But anyway, it was a great evening. And like I said, when we left after, you know, we ate and everything else, there were still a ton of people there spending money and enjoying the evening in Madison. And I thought that was great. And I want to encourage everybody to take advantage of the celebration on the third at Dublin. And I'm sure there's more information that's coming out on the website, so please watch out for that.
So I want to send a shout out to Public Works and All They're Doing is Clean, Keep Dishes Clean, those kind of things. And remind everybody, as we are in the rainy season, you know, flash floods is really kind of what gets us because there's trash in the gutters and debris in there. Then it slows that down, it backs water up and creates some issues on the road. So if you, you know, if you're putting stuff out, make sure it's not in the gutters. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, District Four. District Six.
I'd like to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the Madison Police Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. The topic is summer safety and it's at the library, starts at six o'clock. I'd also like to welcome B B back. It is great to have you back again, Mr. Face, Mr. Input. Other than also welcoming everybody to make sure to come to the Fourth of July celebration. It is one of the things that bring us together as a community. It's always a wonderful event. I'd like to thank Corey and his staff for always doing such a wonderful job and putting that together. Also, always the hard part, but I always said I'd keep everyone up to date on what's going on with Mass. And since the last meeting, we found out that the cancer has spread excessively. There are tumors in a lot of different places. We just spent the weekend in the hospital. He was having cognitive problems because of the brain tumors. So tomorrow, they decided not to do brain surgery now at this point. They thought about perhaps a pituitary gland, but they decided to just go ahead and radiate. So tomorrow, we'll be doing brain radiation. And we're just going forward one day at a time. But I still want to thank everyone for their wonderful support through all this. Everybody has been so incredibly kind and so good to us. And I would be remiss if I did not thank them publicly for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. First, I have resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash two oh five dash R, authorizing the archiving of the live stream of our work session. Move to approve. Motion, and let's give Mara the second. Any discussion? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Bartlet, sorry. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
And the motion passes. Next, in a segue to the M P C A C meeting tomorrow evening, there is a vacancy in District Five. And so we are soliciting applications for District Five. And you can send those in online. Also, our next work session is scheduled for Wednesday, July nineteenth, at five-thirty P M here in council chambers. I want to congratulate the Trash Pandas for opening their store. I think the mayor and I contributed to the sales tax revenue substantially on Saturday. That was a lot of fun and the store looks great. They have a lot of great selection there. So I encourage everyone to shop there if you need to get gifts or just something for yourself. The summer concert, fantastic. It just gets better and better each time and the attendance grows. And so it was great seeing you more there again and my dog again just loves seeing you. So this is great.
Mascot.
Okay, and that's all I have for District Five. We have, we do not have any board or committee appointments. We do not have any public hearings this evening. So we will move to department reports, beginning with engineering.
All right. First, I have resolution number two thousand and twenty-three, one ninety-six R. This is authorizing a public service, a public professional services agreement with Barge Design Solutions in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for a FEMA no-ride certification on project number twenty-three dash zero-one-two. This is the Balch and Brown's Ferry intersection improvement, looking at a roundabout there. Basically, this area is in the flood plain, part of it's in the floodway. And just in case any of that design gets into the area where we have to fill into that, we'll have to certify it no-ride. And so this is just in case we need to do that situation.
Move to approve. Okay, Mara's got the motion, Teddy has the second. Any discussion question?
Just want to say thank you, very excited about this project.
All right, ready for vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Okay, motion passes, next.
All right, next is several subdivisions. First is resolution number two thousand and twenty-three, two oh six R. This is acceptance of Acadia at Arlington Park into the City of Madison Maintenance Program.
Need to approve.
Motion second, any questions?
Since we have four of these, can you remind everybody what we do as a city when it gets to this point? You know, just so we know what we're accepting.
So at this point, we are accepting the final plat to create these lots and to allow certificates of occupancy for the residents that are building these houses. At this point, we've received our maintenance bond amount. We've verified the amounts for that, received either a check or a letter of credit. Our engineering inspector has gone through and made sure that the as-build is substantially matches the design or any change orders for that. And we've also received verification from Madison Utilities that all the infrastructure that's been put in for their use has also been inspected and tested.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Ready for vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Motion passes.
All right, next is resolution number two thousand and twenty-three, two oh seven R. This is acceptance of Bradford Station Phase Two into the City of Madison Maintenance Program.
Need to approve. Second.
Motion second, any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Motion passes.
All right, next is a resolution two thousand and twenty-three, two zero eight R, acceptance of Windermere Subdivision Phase Two into the City of Madison Maintenance Program.
Need to approve. Second.
Motion second, any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Motion passes.
And finally, resolution number two thousand and twenty-three, two nineteen R, acceptance of Greenbrier Hills Phase Four into the City of Madison Maintenance Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any questions? Ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire.
So this is another like for your consideration for resolution number two thousand and twenty-three, two sixteen R, authorizing a contract with Huntsville Design and Construction to make repairs at the front stucco above the bay doors at Fire Station One. Now a five thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars to be paid from our budget.
Need to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and we had a question earlier.
So why do we need it?
So it's hard to see from the, from the bay, I mean, from the ramp. But if you come upstairs, you can see where there's separation over the far two bays, farthest two bays. And we're trying to get it, we've had it inspected. We're trying to get it ahead of this before the damage gets worse and it gets a lot more expensive. So we'll need to make those repairs.
And a safety issue.
Yes, ma'am, and it will be a further degradation of the station issue that go along. For some reason, it's separated right there.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Ready for vote? Am I giving the second to Councilmember Spears? We don't have a second. I heard both.
Well, you had two seconds, I think you gave Connie a green.
Can you give it to Connie? Okay, thank you. Sorry, here's the second one.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, legal.
Good evening. Legal has prepared proposed ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash one thirty-four. This is authorizing a franchise agreement with Knowledgey of Huntsville Incorporated, doing business as WOW for the operation and maintenance of the cable and broadband system within the city of Madison. And this will be the first reading. I had a little more information to give you, but I was going to first ask if you had any questions. I know there were some in the comments.
You can go ahead and address some of the comments, any questions.
This had been placed on the agenda a few weeks ago. We pulled it because there were some concerns as to whether or not we were properly taxing, including everything in gross receipts that we can in order to assess a franchise fee. Looking at that, I think the question was raised that Huntsville had done- Looking at that, I think the question was raised that Huntsville had done something, so I wanted to go look and see what Huntsville had done. As it turns out, we have a federal statute, it's called the Internet Tax Freedom Act of twenty sixteen. And this prohibits any city from being able to assess any sort of a fee on internet use. So this is something that unfortunately, the way that cable companies or, you know, people that are providing us these services, they're moving away from being a traditional cable company and they're moving toward providing internet services. The more they provide internet services, the less that we can tax those gross receipts. So we did take an extra look at this, looked at what other cities had done. Unfortunately, with the federal act that we have, our hands are tied and we just simply cannot tax this growing component. So necessarily, the agreement that we have here worked with WOW. They conceded a lot of things that we had discussed about our concerns about people working within our right of ways. We've come up, we got them to agree to have bonds against any sort of damage. We got them to agree to identify any third-party subcontractors working in the right of ways. This has been a big problem for us. We'll find something, someone will break it, sprinkle their system, or they'll go digging somebody's yard and then nobody can find or identify who did it, so we can actually go recoup and get these things fixed. So WOW conceded to these, so we have a lot of, a lot of extra provisions in this that will basically identify those. Also, we also got them to concede that they would have their subcontractors, if they came out, to identify themselves to the property owners. This is another complaint that we hear a lot of. But basically, just so you understand, WOW has been operating in our right of way for a long time. These are basically buried lines. I don't think they're in the middle of any large build-out. So basically, WOW has had a franchise agreement with us. We were going month to month. And this is us renegotiating that for a five-year period so that we can see if there's any sort of change in law, anything that allows us to go back and maybe try to address, trying to, you know, tax those revenues that come from internet. So basically, this has changed from ten years to five years. And I did confirm, in fact, that we, we've done pretty much the best that we can do as far as establishing and structuring our franchise fee.
And Brian?
Yes, I do. I saw that you had, out of a lot of the things that we had discussed about the subcontractors, one of the things I did not see, and I may have missed it, is the right to refuse the, you know, the ability for one of the subcontractor to work within our city limits.
Well, in this particular contract, a lot of what we're looking at is, you know, of course, the cable that's already been laid. Once we, we cannot discriminate against one provider versus another. So it's very hard to have that kind of a right of refusal, once they've already laid the cable. I'd be happy to discuss it with you.
Well, my concern is, is that Madison Utilities had a lot of damage that happened and it was repeatedly the same subcontractor that did the damage. And so we have the right to refuse the contractor if they do repeated damage.
I think that the way that we would hope to handle-
That carry to the subcontractor.
What we've done is, we're also working in concert with engineering. They're revamping their right-of-way permitting, which will also give some hoops and things that people have to identify in order to work in the right-of-way. In addition to that, you know, we can also pull licenses from people when they get into this. So you may not see them there, but I think that we're working in concert with some of the other things that we're looking at. If we need to, you know, take another pass and take another look at it, I'd be happy to. But we have some other pieces of the puzzle that really help address that. But I'd be happy to talk to you in more detail about it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? And this is just a first reading?
Yes. And one more point, this is unassignable. If anyone wants to succeed by this, by WOW, by Knowledgey, no success or interest can just step into their shoes. There's a very large section that says nonassignable, and for that reason, it would be unique to them. And as soon as they sold it, we would basically go back to the drawing board and have an agreement with them.
Okay, next.
All right, thank you. Next, we have proposed ordinance number 2023-188. This is amending the City Code Section two dash four-two dash, I'm sorry, two dash four-two-four. And that's the Order of the Agenda. This was, there was a first reading of five twenty-two. And I believe that we had some discussion about reshuffling and inserting some of the other agenda items that were not already in our city ordinance. So this new updated ordinance would, in fact, put those out there. I believe that the suggestion was that we included board and presentations. And the other one was to make sure that a public hearing was lifted there. And that does that.
Okay. All right.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So this basically is going to keep it as we've been doing it right now?
Yes, during the trial period, we're extending it and changing the ordinance. And accepting the suggestions that were made to add some things that were not in the original ordinance we were trying to find. Okay?
Okay. I do have some comments, the same comments that I had when this originally came through. To me, the voice of the citizens is always the first order of business. It's not the last. I do not support doing this at all. I don't believe that the people's voice belongs at the end. I applaud the citizens that do come out and are engaged, that into the process. And at the time that they attend the city council, they take that time and they want their voice heard. And to put it at the front, I think just gives them the, it just gives them a stronger voice. Instead of waiting till everything is done at the end and everybody's gone. I just really believe that the citizens' voices at the beginning have always championed that. I understand why you want to do it, but I do like the fact that now people do have more options to talk. You can talk of the comments, you can talk at the, about a specific thing. Why don't we just move all of it to the beginning? Why put, why not all of it at the beginning? You could have two chances to talk, but it doesn't have to be one at the beginning and one at the end. Just put it all at the beginning. Everybody can have their say early. I just really still believe in that. So I will continue to vote no on this one.
All right, ready for vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
And the motion passes. Planning.
Just one item this evening, and this is for proposed ordinance number 2023-190. And this is for vacation of a utility and their energy's net in the side yard at one oh three Willow Pond Drive. And this is just to accommodate some site improvements. All of the departments and utilities have taken a look at it and are in agreement with this request.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Police.
Deanna, I'm here for Resolution 2023-201R. And this is authorizing an agreement with the Madison Board of Education for an additional school resource officer. And that'll be for the new Churney Middle School for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four school year.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, I think Teddy has the motion and then Connie has a second. All right, any questions? Um, yeah, the director, Eric's traffic controller. Okay, Chief Candy, is there anything different about this agreement and any other method of, or maybe this is a mayor question in terms of how we split the fees and how we pay for SROs?
I don't believe so.
We're just adding a new one because we have a new school coming online and then we've had a previous contract for the others?
The only term that I think that might address your question would be that we stated that they would be responsible for forty hours of, I'm sorry, forty dollars per hour for overtime. And I think that before we just simply said overtime. So I think we actually assigned a dollar value to that, but that is the only other change I know of.
Okay. We're specifying what the overtime rate is?
Yes.
Okay. All right, ready for vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert. Motion passes.
A second resolution is 2023-202R, and that's authorizing an agreement, again, with the Madison Board of Education for school crossing guards, again, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion and second by Shaw. Any questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert. And motion passes. Next.
And final resolution for us is 2023-218R, and that's authorizing, it's essentially a renewal with the Department of Justice for buying Kevlar vests, bullet-resistant vests for our officers. This particular agreement will replace twenty-five current vests and also for our new hires. We just hired two new ones today.
Move to approve.
Okay, give it to Connie. Have a second?
Second.
All right, Shaw has the second. Any questions for discussion? You said we just hired two new?
Yes, ma'am. And just to be clear, this is a matching grant. They paid half, we paid the other half.
Any other questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Recreation.
Good evening. I have Resolution 2023-209R, authorizing contract with Baseline Sports Construction LLC for the construction of open-air pickleball courts in the amount of five hundred fourteen thousand five hundred thirty-five dollars. This project is renovating the tennis courts, the Hexagon facility into twelve pickleball courts.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions?
So this is renovating what we've already, in addition to the three hundred eighty-five thousand, which we already, or just approving the contract itself?
It's approving the contract with the construction firm to do the work. So I don't know, I don't know what to refer, it's saying, I don't know, three hundred eighty-five thousand.
Oh, I just meant, when I went through the contract, it really didn't say how many pickleball courts and all was going to be included. And I just had more questions about what extensive work was going to be added, or is it just redoing what we have?
It's adding new fencing, doing a new base, painting the lines, painting the courts, probably adding some sidewalks to access those kind of things.
Okay, thank you. It just wasn't clear in the contract that all was going to-
Tennis courts that are in disrepair, converting them into brand-new pickleports, pickleball courts which are sorely needed.
How many are over at Dublin now?
We have four that are like designated pickleball courts. And then just because of the demand, we've lined all the tennis courts, which I'm not going to get into it. But the tennis players and the pickleball players don't like playing on the same court. This will help alleviate that problem. But if you go there on a weekend, there's more pickleball people playing pickleball than there are tennis on the tennis courts.
So this significantly increases the opportunity for people to play pickleball?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there any, are there any companies out there, private companies that do this?
If they are, they're not bidding on this project. We contacted the city of Gunnersville and they recently added pickleball, well, everybody's adding pickleball. And all six of their vendors that they sent their bids out to, not one of them bid on this project. So I found two people that were interested. One, this company's out in Knoxville, Tennessee. And I found another one, and the other bid was about forty-five thousand dollars more than this bid.
Okay. But yeah, my question was, is there an enterprise out there that does this? So instead of the city paying for the courts and all, is there a business that goes and does pickleball courts? Kind of like a gym, you know, the same kind of thing, a private business that does this?
I'm not aware of any. I'm not aware of any. I know that there's a, there is something coming to Mid-City that has this pickleball related. But I think it's more of a bar and grill type top golf facility than it is more recreation pickleball.
Okay. So instead of the city waiting for a enterprise, a business entity to come and do this, we're going to be proactive and do it so our citizens have more places to play?
Yeah.
Is that basically it?
It's a recreation need. I mean, we did a recreation survey and pickleball is in the top five of the desired projects for more citizens.
Right. Well, I've had people question why we do it instead of having a private company.
Well, you can say that for anything. There's private entities that run sports complexes. There's private entities that run water parks. There's private entities that do a lot of different things. People pay their tax money to expect something for their recreation needs in their community, just like a park. You can have private parks. I mean, you can privatize pretty much anything we do.
Okay, that's fine. I just have a question. Any other questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Motion passes.
My second item is Resolution 2023-212R, authorizing a contract with Endzone LLC, doing business as Hall of Fame Course Design for the design of an eighteen-hole disc golf course at the Sunshine Oaks property. When we bought the property, this was always one of our, that property sets up well for a nice disc golf course. We don't have a full course in town. If you want to do that, there's, you have to travel to Huntsville and other places. We've worked with this designer. He's one of the top in the nation and he lives right here, I think, in Madison.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to Powell. Any questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Thank you, Cory. Thank you so much.
Cory, please go. Can you give a little bit more information on July third, kind of what else is going on at Dublin Park?
Yep. July third, Monday, from five to nine, we'll be doing our July fourth event. We'll have music, inflatables, food trucks, and of course fireworks at nine. It's amazing that when we moved it off the fourth, we actually get a better turnout than Fourth of July itself. So it's a free event to the public. And the tradition's kind of our state, our signature event here in town. Not too many cities do the fireworks anymore. So if you're available on the third, come on out. It's a really good time. The band that's playing is Groove, which they played at the concert in the park. They're really, really good. I'm guessing if you haven't seen them.
And is there, do we still have the bus service?
Well, yep, the bus from Bob Jones, I think, starting about an hour before the events, around four o'clock.
And fireworks at nine?
Fireworks at nine, weather permitting. And we, I've been struggling with some weather in my special events here lately, three in a row. Yeah.
Is there a back-up date in case the third doesn't work?
Nope, we go rain or shine. The only thing that'll stop it is a storm. So fireworks are going, whether it's raining or not.
Well, last year was great. It rained and then it stopped and then the fireworks happened.
Little window, man. I was holding my breath, yeah.
We'll pray for good weather.
Thank you, Cory. Thank you, Cory.
Thank you, ma'am.
Now, we're at the portion of the agenda for additional public comments. Everyone has three minutes to speak. And you'll state your name and your district. We had two cards turned in for additional public comments. We will begin with those, starting with Bernadette Mayer from District Five.
All right. I wasn't at the last city council meeting, so I didn't have a chance to talk about that wayfinding design, that quote investment of seven hundred fifty, and it was discussed, I think, one million. I don't think we should spend any on those signs. I think it's lipstick for the city. It's not appropriate at this level of signage ever for a city of six thousand people. Maybe some signs later. That money needs to be spent on city road improvements, main area sidewalks, infrastructure stuff. And even though that Mr. Powell commented, oh, you've always been spending money on sidewalks and streets and whatever, they need to be done. Infrastructure needs to be done. We need to look at, you all to be acting responsibly. And I was very offended by those comments about the road and sidewalk at the last meeting. And then to try to justify the real use of signs by non-residents or, you know, tourists or something, not being able to find their way around. I think ID Department can either develop some kind of a city app if they want to, or really, as long as all the addresses for all the city stuff is in, has addresses where you can put, look up in Google Maps or Google for directions, that's where people are using to navigate their round, thing around places. It's a wake-up call. I think the- I think the reset, the May election should have been telling you that you need to be directing more city money to infrastructure. The sidewalks, crosswalk safety, proper drainage, quality road pavements, and not sidewalks and stuff done as cheaply as possible. I think, I think a lesson needs to be learned from Birmingham, which neglected water and sewer to the point where they had bond issue bankruptcy. The Birmingham city had plenty of revenues, it was lack of proper spending on infrastructure along with other mayor and leadership issues. The $3 million bucket item from the last city council meeting, I don't care if Major League Baseball desires various things approved on the stadium. We've invested enough in the Toyota Stadium, in Town Madison, the flyover, and I understand from the mayor newsletter about that we're probably getting, I guess, a little bit of state financial director indicates some segment to widen, whatever, that they're going to throw in some money. But it's like, we're spending all this money, and, okay, and then the recreation at the Hexagon, I can understand, it's expensive area to do it, but it's leading to more success of Town Madison and that general area. But there is going to be future spending there as well with the police and fire, whatever. We need that 3 million towards road, sidewalk, safety, crosswalk, two people killed on County Line Road, current neighborhoods want those main road areas with, to walk, and that's like recreation. And that's, I'm running out of time, so I'm just very frustrated about that all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer. The second comment card that we have is from BB Ocean, District 7.
I just want to get this on the agenda, I mean, on the record. I'm talking about the cemetery. Cemetery can't speak for you, I mean, for them, so I'm speaking for them. The cemetery is a place for memories, love, friendships, respect, and reverence. Since the complete rape of the property, that north and west of the cemetery, we need a fence around the cemetery. And I have heard all kinds of things about wooden fences and everything else. Frankly, a fence should have been around the cemetery before now. It has to be done now, I'm sure. What we need to do is to continue the same iron fence that is on the two entrances into the cemetery. And I hope the city will do this, not the people that have run this property over here. The fence might need to be taller on the north side, because they are actually building these shanty-town houses, right slap up as close to the cemetery property as they can get it. We've got money to do this fence, and the cemetery deserves your respect and caring. I don't know if this is something you all do, or it's done just by the planning department, or it's already decided, but I'm here to ask for a fully, well, iron fence, just like what's in the front, all the way around the cemetery. If the people next door that are doing this property want to put up a wooden fence, let them put it on their property, not on the city property. Please see that that's done. Okay, now, we're talking about this property. It's a disaster over there. I probably can't get through all of this, but we have boas in the city that should be used to help do this. I know you're going to say it's R4, and it couldn't be changed, but you've changed zoning throughout the city on every single thing imaginable, except R4. And R4 is what we've got over there, and you all passed it, the city passed it, everybody passed it, and it is awful. I regret to see anybody that likes it. I call it shanty-town and everything. And, you know, we do a lot of things on plans, master plans and growth plans, and I don't think you all read them all. I request that you read the latest one, Madison on Track, on tree cover. You're not going by what they tell you to do. Now, the leaf was left over there. Most subdivisions that you see east of Walter Island have trees on them. When they built these subdivisions, since I've lived here, and I've lived here a long time, most, all of them left trees on, in these subdivisions. This one did not leave a leaf. I could go on.
Thank you, Ms. Ocean. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council for additional public comments?
Margie Daly, Karen's District. Okay, so I hear a lot, $3 million more over this, pickleball courts. All the citizens want is safety, okay? You're giving away our sidewalks on this side of town. Some of our roads haven't been paved in over 30 years. Steel, all of the roads over here are horrible. I mean, how can you not allow us safety in our city as you create $3 million sidewalks for Town Madison, 20 pickleball courts for a building? I don't know, we haven't done anything with it yet. Then, you know, the planning department is just giving away our sidewalks. They're giving away portal road, they're giving away used road, they gave away this. Come on, guys, keep us safe. The streetlights are a mess, okay? They have two-foot arms, they don't, you know, we used to have the Cobra lights, they lit the streets. That's what they're supposed to do. Safety of your citizens. I mean, I'm here 20 years. Our area has deteriorated. You have allowed it to deteriorate as you prop up 20 pickleball courts and whatever else you're doing with all this money. It goes to Town Madison, shanty-town. You have no respect, this construction sites, you're telling us, don't go on them? Well, secure them. Put a fence around it people can't get on. Yes, I went right on there because there is no security, just like I can go on shanty-town. All we want is safety. The streetlights have to be fixed. People are dying. I mean, they're walking out in the road, you can't see, it's, County Line Road is very bad with these new streets. Brown Ferry is bad, the neighborhoods are bad. They're pitch black, doesn't anybody care? Isn't that supposed to be your job, to keep us safe? I mean, I thought that's what the council did. All right, as far as the Mr. Bellamy's expressions last council meeting, I mean, he said the quiet part out loud. Nobody is his boss except for Mr. Finley. That's what he told us. Well, the mayor is not a permanent employer here. You are elected by us, the people. We can also impeach you. As far as the sign stuff goes, we don't need that. Yes, an app can do that, or a sign shop for a million dollars. The streetlights I've addressed, we spent four to six million dollars on these horrible lights that are not keeping us safe. Why, we need to stop prostituting Madison City for every possible federal tax dollar that's out there. We now have a lobbyist and a new hire, Gerald whatever, I'd like to know his last name, I didn't catch it. We need to fix the sidewalks and streets before updating the White Elephant Trash Stadium. Our MLB team, A's, have a crumbling stadium, yet we're going to put $3 million into ours. Their stadium is crumbling.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. And is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and district. Seeing none, we will close additional public comments. Are there any miscellaneous announcements? And a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.